Calling the meeting of Spokane City Council to order our study session of September 28th. And our first presenter is Mr. Matt Boston. We're going to discuss budget.
Thank you.
We have you down for 45 minutes.
Yeah, I don't think I'll need quite 45 minutes. This is actually two parts of conversation. So first is the ARPA discussion as we've been having it over the last few weeks on potential sweepbacks, what the ARPA work group has committed to so far to present to the entirety of council for an SBO for sweepbacks, and then kind of talking about the larger impacts to the overall budget. I've had a lot of questions from different council members that have asked me kind of what the stage of the process is, what are the proposals that we've received. I know the intention was to have a bit more information for the entirety of council at this point, but it looks like the council will not be briefed on all of the administration's proposals until the prelim budget is presented, which is Monday, October 2nd. So what I can give you is the information that I have so far, kind of my insight and how we've got there, because I've gotten a handful of questions. So starting off, I just want to talk about the SBO that we have. You all know about the conversations that we've had by identifying the different programs and projects, the status of them over the last few years at this point in time. 6.1 was identified, so about 6.1 million dollars was identified in the ARPA sweepback exercise by the ARPA work group, the council ARPA work group. And in that is 1.7 million dollars that's identified in failed search projects. That is the mobile medical, the eviction defense, the administrative legal support for eligibility firm for about $100,000, as well as $100,000 for the community engagement coordinator that we had within the council office. So that nets out to about 1.7. There was about $390,000 that was identified in unallocated funding. And then there was the $4 million in 1590 funding shift for affordable housing projects. Now, in talking to Nicolette Ockletree this morning, there is some discussion that we need to have about that. And I'm going to have Nicolette come up here in just a few minutes if we have any questions. But basically, policies and procedures require that the Housing Action Subcommittee agree to this project being funded by 1590 prior to it being funded by 1590. So if we were to sweep that back, remember, this is the project that has had a substantial amount of delays along the way. But if we were to sweep that back and allocate it for 1590, it would need to go through the Housing Action Subcommittee at that time. They are meeting October 19th next. So we were suggesting this SBO be put forth for legislative action on October 16, requesting at this point in time that we defer it till October 23rd. So the Housing Action Subcommittee has an opportunity to review this before it going to council for a vote. Including in that is, so that's the SBO as it was written so far. For, as we're looking at funding opportunities for Trent for 2024, obviously, we have that roughly 1.8 million dollars in Department of Commerce funding that's eligible for use after 7-1-2023. That nets out to about 7.9 million dollars in proposed 2024 funding. Now, as a reminder, the CHHS department put out an RFP for the Trent operations provider for $9 million for a 12-month contract. So as you can see, that does fall short of the 9 million. In addition to that, what is needed for just general operations and cost is the lease payments, as well as just random repairs and maintenance that happen with the facility itself. So the other potential funding sources that we have down below that we need to discuss are the 500K of the 1.5 million dollar bathroom renovations that we are talking about. Now, I know that there's a lot that's up in the air about what's going to happen long-term with Trent. I think the idea of doing renovations on a building that isn't owned by the city of Spokane, and essentially calling that a sunk cost at that point in time, and then remember not being able to recapture or break to zero till about 18 months after that project is completed. There was a decision, or at least a discussion that was made, that we hold off on making any sort of investments for a facility that isn't ours at that point in time. Now, for that 1.5 million dollar facility upgrade, we were planning on utilizing $1 million in REIT I funding that the state legislator gave the opportunity for municipalities to use for upgrades of facilities, homeless facilities, housing homeless individuals or individuals experiencing homelessness, or affordable housing projects was kind of in that category. So that's where we pulled that 1 million dollar amount from, yes.
Yeah, so I guess I'm confused. We voted to allocate the 1 million, correct, on those projects?
Yeah.
Because I recall voting against it. So when do we vote to not take that action?
Well, so you wouldn't vote to not take that action. The contract hasn't come to you yet. And so the discussions-
But the money is theoretically tied up, right?
The money is theoretically tied up at this point in time. So what you would have to do is essentially reshuffle the chess pieces on the board. You would have to take a million dollars because the REIT I funding cannot be used for operations like REIT II can currently. Remember, REIT II has that 35% threshold of the fund balance, of the available fund balance, whereas REIT I was 1 million dollars cap for capital improvements. So if you were to do that, you would have to look at your 2024 overall budget and say, okay, well, are we funding anything that is eligible under REIT I funding eligibility from the general fund in 2024 funds, so that you could pull out of REIT I, supplant that back into the general fund upgrades that you were planning on doing, and then essentially free up a million dollars in general fund funding. Now, whether you want to use that towards track or not, that's a discussion that you have, yeah.
But if, I guess my frustration is if, and again, I'm grateful in this direction because I voted against it, but if we're suddenly changing course and council hasn't had any input, that's a little frustrating, because I don't think there's been even one touch that I've been a part of, at least-
Yeah.
-that suggested we were changing course. In fact, I thought we were getting close to seeing something getting finalized at track.
Yeah. Well, so contract just came, became available during the discussions of the RFP at that point in time. As RFP was finalizing, I believe the contract was being finalized of the nuts and bolts of that. The decision at that point in time was not necessarily to do a full stop, but just to kind of hit a pause button to see, okay, what direction are we going to go overall? I mean, as you say, let's not make this decision in a vacuum. Let's have the discussion about the contract, our long-term implications, et cetera. So there has been no firm decision that has been made regarding this amount, just throwing it out there as a potential for next steps in these conversations.
But for precedence, I mean, if we allocate, if this council perhaps unanimously suggests we're going to spend money on something, and then somebody somewhere else just decides, nah.
Right.
That doesn't work for me.
Understandable.
No, it has to be our, it would be our decision.
Correct, correct. Yes, absolutely. And part of the overall discussion that we're having here, again, this part of this discussion is in its infancy. I mean, I want to say had it two weeks ago. So this is my opportunity to bring it to you from the briefing side that I have. Moving along to 500,000, again, that's another piece of that 1.5 million dollar project. 500,000, in theory, could have been pulled from REIT II or ARPA. I think, actually, I know the way that we had requested that the administration spend the ARPA, or the spend the homelessness funds towards track was use REIT II first, and then ARPA. So ideally, that wouldn't be touched at this point in time, and it'd be free up for ARPA to either use for track or not in this future 2024 model. So all in all, I mean, that's about, what, 8.4 million, or 9.4 million dollars that could be used for Trent in 2024 if everything on that board is used for Trent. So that's kind of where we're at with that. Does anybody have any questions? Yes?
So here's my question. I was at the CHH, I'm on the CHHS board with Nancy. We were at the meeting where the RFP, the applicants came through. One was the-
Right.
-the Jules.
Yep.
And we passed it, and then we found out there was really no money there. So we're backtracking and going through this process to find the money. So if, with that being said, and that Jules contract being approved by the CHHS board, and we say, council decides to say, you know what, we can't put that money in those capital improvements because we don't own the building.
Right.
Then does that make that contract go to restart that process?
No, I don't think so.
Because that's going to change the costs for, I would think.
I don't think that, and I'd have to ask Kim if she's here, but I don't believe that there was any sort of-
Does that make sense?
I don't believe that there was any sort of contract provisions or provisions within the RFP that leaned against the bathroom upgrades happening.
Okay.
Kim shaking her head no. So I believe-
But one follow-up on that. We were told that that would provide a substantial operating cost reduction.
Cost savings, right.
And so if we just throw that out the window, then?
Well, it would, so it would, it would, the cost savings would materialize after the project is finished, obviously. Having said that, going into winter, we know that without the project being underway, because I believe there has to be sewer work done from the street, without the project being underway at this point in time, I don't think you're going to materialize that for another six months after the ground starts thaw out, or at least, I would say, March, April. So say they got the interior work done at this point, and then did exterior work subsequent to that, when ground was thawed and they were able to do the outside work. I think you're looking at, best-case scenario, six months to materialize the cost savings. And then, at that point in time, another 18 months on top of that to break zero, to break even with the investment that you've made. Because you'll obviously have a cost savings, but it's not going to be 1.5 million dollars in cost savings off the bat, which is why we had the discussion in the first place in saying, okay, well, why would we do this to a building, to a facility that's not ours? If we're going to do building improvements to a facility that's not ours, should we get some sort of incentive to do this? Because it obviously helps the landowner in discussions, at least from what I've been briefed in those discussions, is the landowner didn't have any intention in shouldering any of those costs, or providing any benefit to the city after those costs were completed. Because it's my understanding that Mr. Stone wanted to essentially rip those bathrooms out once, if, and when the city decided to get out of the facility. Any other questions on this at this point in time?
No, but we'll probably come back and ask you this repeatedly, because it seems so bizarre to me. But thanks.
The potential funding sources that read dollars is not for track. That's for, if it were not used for the original purposes, it would be used for something not track.
Well, it could be used for track. It could not be used for track. I mean, it frees up those funds, essentially.
But don't they have to be used on capital projects?
No. Well, so, yes, the REIT does. The REIT has to be used on capital projects. So again, remember, you could shift the chess pieces around and say, so currently, right now, within the, and I've asked Jessica Stratton for the summarized list of this, but currently within the capital improvement plan for, you know, the long-term capital improvement plan in 2024, we have roughly 3.8 million dollars of general fund capital going to that plan. So in theory, if there are eligible project within that of a million dollars, you could pull that from that. I mean, I know that there's police facility upgrades, for example, or you could pull a million dollars out of that if it's not already funded 100% through grants. You could pull a million dollars out of that if it's being funded through general funds. So those are the discussions that we could have if and when we decide that we're going to pull that away from it. That's why this conversation, again, is in its infancy. That's not on the SBO whatsoever.
No, I was just going to comment to council member Cat Cart that, for me, there's so many unknowns as to funding. It's like, which domino is going to fall first? Are we going to put the plumbing in? Are we going to extend the contract past June of next year? That's been a conversation, because we can only fund it for a half a year. Where is our regional homeless coalition going to come into a homeless place? So until there's some concrete decisions made, I feel like we're speculating.
And again-
Just a reminder, though, we are going to be getting, how much in commerce next year?
So that's the 1.8 that's on the bottom there. The 1.8 has already been received.
So that extends the June deadline. We fund through June, and then that commerce money-
Well, you could, I mean, no matter however you want to look at it, you could say, yes, we're going to fund through June, or you could say, here's the identified amount of funding that we have. Let's curtail our services to that identified amount of funding. That's generally what you would do in a services contract, is you would say, I have 5 million dollars. You wouldn't say, I have a need, tell me how much it is, and, oh, it's 12 million dollars, I'll try to find the 12 million dollars. Generally, you'll identify a line item and say, this is the amount of money that we have to spend on this. Let's curtail the services to that line item.
Council member Orlick, do you want to go ahead?
Yes, thank you. Matt, and maybe this is a question for Kim if she's there. So just so I'm clear, at this point, there is zero effort to identify any other facility or any CHHA staff still looking for any other potentials at this point.
I believe, yeah, I believe that's correct. We are in a long-term, a five-year lease. Go ahead, Kim.
Yes, council member, that's correct. At this time, track is a facility that we're not looking at any other specific shelter locations at this time. Thank you.
And as a reminder, there is a one-year proviso in the lease term arrangement that if you want out of the lease, you have to give a one-year notice. So factor that into your decisions as you're looking at contracts, as you're looking at long-term plans, et cetera.
Go ahead.
Yeah, two things. One, and I was a little late, so maybe this was touched on, Canon, where do we stand there, and how do our savings from the operations, plus the potential sale or something with the building, play into this? And then, secondly, you mentioned, or maybe it's council president, mentioned the 1.8 million from Commerce being able to extend past June. Could we also, if that is in fact the case, could we also then consider maintaining that a contract would expire at June, and we could pass that money along to a regional homelessness authority to continue then and take over the operations?
So, short answer, Canon, from my understanding is we're not materializing any savings. I believe the security that we're having to put in place on the building itself is overrunning any sort of savings that we've had.
Seriously?
That's the last I've heard, is that-
It's also maintenance. I mean, you can't leave a building unheated or just leave it. You have to do some remedial stuff to keep it alive.
I think that that's part of the overall conversation that we need, we're continuing to have, is not just Canon, but also looking all surplus property, and seeing what, in fact, we need to get rid of. Because while, yes, you know, in the sense of Canon, you know, maybe we materialize a half a million dollars or $250,000, but we're also saving, what is it, maybe $25,000 a month in security costs and policing costs. I think those are some things that we need to be cognizant of as we're making these overall decisions. I've got that note down, and I can get you that answer. As it relates to the 1.8, I don't think I understood your question, so you're-
So if we have more than enough money to get us past June-
Yeah.
-in operating, could we essentially turn this over to the regional authority in June and pass through the dollars that we've received from Commerce, and then essentially, it's their baby at that point?
From my opinion, I believe you can do that at any point. I don't think you have to wait till June. I think you could do this in January if an agreement is made, and you can hand that-
Even if there's an active contract with a provider, all that?
I mean, I think, obviously, not having legal expertise, I think there would be some hoops that you'd have to jump through to transfer that contract over to a regional group. I know in my discussions, and from what I've heard them present, is that they are looking for the funding of 2024 for the Trent Shelter, and they're looking to maintain that through the end of the year. Now, what they do past that, I'm not quite sure. I don't think that there's a lot of interest for them to stay in there long-term. So that might be your perfect opportunity segue to say, okay, this is our first move towards it, is saying, here's the funding for 2024, and here's our initial investment for it, and start with that.
Keeping in mind that, right now, because I go to all those meetings, the only money that's been identified has been city of Spokane money, pass-through money. So we can let them manage it and give them our pass-through money, or we can do it with our pass-through money. It doesn't really matter. It's still our money that, it's not our money, but it is the money that we are in charge of. So-
Well, it's also, but I mean, the way that this is identified at this point in time, I mean, yes, ARPA could theoretically be considered pass-through money. And I know that that's not what you're referring to.
No, it wasn't.
But this is, when we're talking about what they would use for operations for track, it would very much be these identified funding sources that we have on the board.
Right, that are ours, and nobody else's.
They're not ours.
Well, you know what I'm saying.
Yes.
But they're all one-time funding, so that gets us through next year, and then we just postpone the cliff.
Yes.
And I know we're, I, I'm already going, going over time just on this one, so I'll try to move along here a bit. I, I just want to make sure that we're good with the, the next steps in this process of having this, in theory, be on legislative action in three weeks, October 23rd be the legislative vote for the SBO, and, and the Housing Action Subcommittee being able to either affirm that this is a, is a qualified project under their scope on October 19th or not. Hearing no objections, I'm, I'm going to say that that's-
We'll, we'll connect offline. I came in a couple minutes late, so let's connect offline.
Okay, sounds good. So, now, in talking about 2024 current funding discussion, you know, I've, I've, like I said, I've had a lot of discussions with different council members. I understand that there's frustration of the level of information that you have versus not, versus some getting more, versus some getting less. So, what I'm, what I'm going to try to do is give as much information as I can. I have requested detailed information, of which I have not been able to obtain at this point in time, just based on the level of comfort that the administration has in sharing some of the detail. So what I can give you is, is where we're at, and kind of how we got there. Before we go up to the board, I just kind of wanted to talk to you a little bit about the budget crunch that we're currently under, and how it happened. I want to tell you that, that overall revenues from 2021 to proposed adopted 2023, 2023 revenues have increased just shy of 11%, or from 206.6 million to 228.9 million. Though, in reality, we're currently trending even less than that, the 220, the 228.9, based on sales tax performance that we're seeing, is, is going to, from my perspective, be about $1 million less. Jake Miller, who is the, the one that does a lot of the analysis on the, the taxable sales, sent this out in early, oh gosh, it was, actually, I'm sorry, just last week, that total taxable sales for the month of July 2023, now remember, again, we're arrears to two months, were 0.66% less than total taxable sales in the month of July of 2022. Year-to-date total taxable sales in 2023 are 1.97, 1.97% greater than year-to-date total taxable sales at this time in 2022. Now, while that, in theory, might sound good, remember that we were pushing back against the administration on the optimism that they had for the taxable sales for 2023. We met in the middle with a roughly 3.5% sales tax growth from 2022 to 2023. So if we're at 2% greater, we're, we're 1.5% less than where we need to be right now. So that's, in that, in that same vein, that's where we're showing about a million dollars short in our overall revenue for 2020, 2023. Now, on the same side, the overall expenses during that same period has increased 12.8%. So that is the definition of a structural gap, is we have revenues that are growing at roughly 10.5% in, in reality, and we're at 12.8%. If you include the necessary mid-year adjustment that we needed, which went from 212.5 million to 237.5 million during that same period of time. Now, a lot of questions are asking, where are those increases? Well, during that same time, Police has increased their budget 22.1% from $67 million to $81.8 million during that same period of time, for actuals versus where you're at. So if the question is, is that we're not funding Police, that's, that's not accurate. Your, your votes have, have shown that that's, that's the complete opposite. Likewise, Fire has increased their budget 21% from 57, 57 million to 69 million. But remember, Fire, on the flip side, had their property tax levy lid lift last year that was approved, and they brought in an additional $10 million to cover those costs during that period of time. So, while we're talking about a roughly 4%, 3%, 4%, 5% increase in sales tax revenue, or, or overall revenue to the general fund, that is all shouldered, that is shouldering all of the, essentially, all of the Police expenses, even if, just by basic math, if you say, okay, we're, you know, our $230 million revenue is increasing at, say, 4%, right? That's what, 8 point, I'm sorry, $9.2 million? $9.2 million doesn't even cover that gap if we increase at that rate of 10% per year for Police. So, we have talked about it over and over, saying that we need an additional revenue source and to right-size expenses. It's not one or the other, it is a both and. Now, a lot of people say, well, how did we get, how is it so substantial during this year? Again, as a reminder, we have covered that structural gap under the veil of one-time money over the last three years now. During 2021, tail end of 2021, we did a $1.75 million ARPA SBO to cover Fire overtime. In 2022, we did a 2.5 PD overtime increase, and a 3, gosh, $3.7 million Fire overtime ARPA SBO. In 2022, we also paid for $3.1 million in unbudgeted capital for the Police Department. In 2022, we had 11-plus million dollars in labor contracts that we said that are, are pending and are going to come to fruition, and we're going to need that money. And then, again, just a few short months ago, we approved an $8.9 million overtime increase in 2023 for Police. So those huge impacts have covered this large structural gap that you've experienced over the last few years, that has grown larger and larger and larger. Now, obviously, this is something that we talked about, actually, about a year ago, a little bit over a year ago, I gave a presentation to you where I said that I projected the 20, 2024 to be a cliff. It was going to be anywhere between 20 and 40 million deficit, whereas the administration said that there was going to be a $4 million deficit from what they were seeing at that point in time. 20 to 40 million is exactly where we're landing. We're landing at 20 because it doesn't include capital, and it doesn't include Trent on that $20 million agreement that we made back in August with Jessica Stratton and ourselves. Council has continued to ask for unfiltered access to Cabinet members and department heads to identify budget cuts with a scalpel, rather than blindfolded. This is something that, you know, previously was done with prior administrations, that there was that access, there was that connection to Cabinet members and department heads to identify those budget cuts. Without that access, we've been, I, I think the, the council has been criticized for not being able to give suggestions, but as Councilmember Cathcart has said in the past, we can't really give suggestions when we don't have access to the, the, the department heads that we need to talk to. In October 17th, based on what we were seeing for the past year and a half before that, council passed a resolution requesting a 10% decrease in general fund expenditures for all departments. That was passed 6 to 1. Council office and legal, actually, managed to be the only ones to make cuts within the general fund. So right now, we're looking at a $20 million shortfall. We've, we've thrown out a handful of ideas. Early on, obviously, we've been talking about increased revenues, and increased revenues also means taxes. We, we know that. We know that, because that's what the county is doing as well, when they're talking about Measure 1. We know that that's what we're talking about, when we're talking about levy lid lifts, just like Fire did, knowing that they were under the struggles that they, they were in. When we started having those discussions, that was during our mid-year budget adjustment times that we were talking about, and we saw a $9 million upside-down hole for 2023, whereas the administration saw a $500,000 positive surplus. So we were fighting that fight at the exact same time that we were talking about 2024, so that that $9 million SBO kind of took up all of the air in the room, and that's where we had that conversation for the remainder of the, that time, that we could have put something on the ballot for August, for this year, to take place on January 1st of 2024. That said, one of the immediate things that I talked to Marlene Feist, as well as Garrett, after the transition of Johnny Perkins, was the increase in inter-fund utility tax. So as you all know, we have a 20% incre, or we have a 20% tax to our inter-fund utilities that we charge, because remember, they are enterprise funds, that we charge them for, essentially, a kickback to the general fund. Now, this is different from a utility rate increase. The utility rate increase has already, that, that discussion has already been had with Marlene and her team, that the, the, the utility rate increase for 2024 has already been put in place. We know that the, the lion's share of that is going to be in solid waste, of which has already been materialized within the budget that they're presenting. But if we were to increase the, the own, our own tax that we put onto other departments, in the tune of each percent that we added, we're going to get about an additional $2 million in revenue. But remember, that when we do that, that doesn't increase their revenue on the back end, that invariably will go into their reserves, because they are, they are running on, on very, very lean budgets as well, and so, to ask them to increase their, their expense contribution to the general fund puts them in a bind. So, that is something that we thought of for a stopgap measure, because it can be done, Councilmatic, yes?
Yeah, just, do we have, do we know what the percent increase that would, that would equate to, to be the 2 million?
2 million would be 1%.
Just a 1%?
Yeah.
Okay.
Roughly 2 million is, is each percentage. We're at 20% at this point in time.
And as you said, that is not, that's not a, something the ratepayer is seeing, but if we're able to sweep 1%, we could theoretically return 1% to those ratepayers, or reduce the utility tax that I don't like at all-
Correct, correct.
To benefit those ratepayers.
So it, it would be a stopgap measure, until you can think of something long-term. The, the two triggers to pull after that stopgap measure is, is fulfilled, is essentially saying, okay, what other revenue are we going to increase? What other expense are we going to decrease to, to make good on that $2 million? Or, or, so that the, the Utilities Department doesn't bleed into the red, then we say, okay, that this goes on to the, the end consumer at some point in time.
Exactly. And would this be a one-time, or is this going to be an ongoing change? Because if it's one-time, it's just sweeping a fund. It's not a sustainable revenue source.
Right.
And it just delays us making the decisions that we need to make.
Yes, so, that, again, these conversations are in their infancy for, for us to start having these conversations now, and, and determine where the entirety of the council is at. At this point in time, I foresee it to be a one-time hit, because it, it can't be sustained within the Utilities Department, from my perspective, because the Utilities Department, in and of itself, needs to increase their, their fees as expenses grow with them. So if we're not only asking them to increase and, and maintain their fees as just consumer price index costs go up, and then also to capture what, the, the general fund deficit that we have, it's unfair to them, and, and it's, it's going to be unfair to the consumers at the end of the day.
Yeah, and, and the other part of this is, I mean, basically, we have a monopolistic, you know, utility kind of system, and so they're, they don't have options, right? We're, we're forcing them into these decisions, which, again, I don't like.
The other discussion that we're currently having, and I know Councilmember Cathcart, Councilmembers Zepone, as well, as well as Councilmember Kinnear have been in some of these conversations, is funding solutions for traffic officers within the traffic calming budget. Now, you see 900K to 1.5 million, we're throwing out a lot of different numbers. The, the administration, I think, had thrown out about a $3.7 million number when they had originally started talking, when we had originally started talking about this. As, as you may or may not remember, we threw $900,000 in the 2023 budget for traffic officers from traffic calming. At that point in time, there was an interest that was had to, to hire those officers, well, I, I don't want to say that there was an interest, there wasn't the, the personnel that they could capture to employ those officers for traffic calming, or, or the traffic department. Chief Mydl and Chief Lundgren have talked to us about their interest in being able to restart the traffic program within PD. Now, remember that if you, and what the, the traffic calming department, or the traffic calming committee had, had discussed, was wanting to see a nexus between what these officers were going to be doing and actual traffic work. I think there was a little bit of concern that, hey, this was just going to go to Police overtime, and where is the traffic benefit that we are going to have? Likewise, on the flip side, the, the council has been adamant about wanting to see additional traffic officers within neighborhoods, and that's, that's what they're hearing loud and clear from constituents. So therefore, my suggestion, I believe, is, is to maintain it solely for traffic, because at the end of the day, these officers, say, if you, if you employ six, which is the, the last number that we've heard from Chief Mydl, you are supplanting their revenue, because remember, any citation that they write goes to the general fund for overtime, so that you keep them come hell or high water, that, that they need to be in there, because they are, they are paying for their other officers that are getting the overtime within the department. It's something to consider. Those, those conversations are still being had, yes?
And just as a carve-out, though, if there is, so you're a traffic officer, and we've had this discussion with them for four years now, if you're, if you're doing a traffic detail, then the only reason you should be pulled off of that is an emergency. So if there's a situation that requires 15 officers, then, yes, you could be pulled off that. Otherwise, that is what you're doing for the day. And as you said, they will generate enough revenue to pay not only for their salaries, but for overtime or additional expenses.
Correct.
Go ahead. Karen first.
I just want to be clear that, that with the traffic calming money, I would really like to be guaranteed, and I don't think we can be, how that money is going to be spent. I mean, we can say traffic calming, we can say patrols, but there, there's got to be a way to track it, because that's money that we have worked with all of our neighborhoods, and all of these workshops, to say, you know, these are your projects-
Absolutely.
-that you want to make traffic and pedestrians safer, have improvements, but I'm really hesitant about this, because we can have that money available, and it goes into this black hole, and then it doesn't come out, we don't see it.
Yeah, I think a lot of the-
Unless some of that money from traffic tickets can go back into traffic calming.
Right, and, and those, again, those discussions are being had, and I, and I know that Councilmember Cathcart and Councilmember Zepone were adamant in those discussions, saying that there has got to be a clear nexus. It cannot be a dotted line that squiggles along-
Measurable, measurable nexus.
Yeah, and measurable outcome, so it, it needs to be seen.
And the neighborhoods, neighborhoods have to see it.
And, and I think that they're adamant on that, and I believe Chief Mydl and Chief Lundgren are hearing that loud and clear, and, and are on their way to get, to get there.
They're just not nodding yes yet.
Not, not yet, but I, I mean, again, those conversations are being had.
Well, I, I guess for me, the, I think the biggest need that we have in traffic calming right now is frankly, capacity building, and we are not delivering on the projects that we have committed to the citizenry at all, frankly, and it's really incredibly frustrating. And then, to talk about potentially sweeping these dollars, and potentially a one-time way, maybe an ongoing way, we, we continue to have those discussions, but it really is frustrating, I think, for the community, who is expecting that these projects that are going to benefit their neighborhoods are going to get delivered as, as promised, and they're not. That said, they are also very much pining for a dedicated traffic unit, and I'm open to the conversation of using traffic calming, because it does go hand-in-hand for that dedicated traffic unit, so long as we have a guarantee that this is not just going to supplant-
Supplant, right, yep.
And it's, and that we are going to see, again, measurable outcomes, and, and I think that's what people want. I mean, I, more than just addressing crime, which is, I think, top of most people's minds, it's the traffic side of law enforcement-
Safety on the streets, correct.
-and traffic calming that people are really, really desperate for.
Yep.
And I would remind everybody that the, the cameras are just about speed, so they'll catch you going 45 past parks or schools, right? But the traffic officers are going to see, oh, you've got an expired license, oh, you're driving erratically, road rage, a number of other things that are higher-priced tickets than just speeding. So they're really creating-
I hope that that's, I would hope that's the case, because we've, that's the worry, is that that's not going to happen.
Yeah, go ahead.
And then, Matt, I just want clarification here. All of these proposals, impact proposals from council, you're saying that this is council-generated this idea? Because I don't believe that is a council-generated idea, it is one that we've been talked about, that the administration-
The, the 900,000 is what we put in the budget for 2022. So, so that's, that's where, yeah, so that, I mean, that was our idea back for 2022, it's now morphed into-
But that's, that wouldn't be an additional revenue source, that's already revenue that we've already set aside. The difference is, that was for- we've already set aside. The difference is that was for additional officers, a higher unit, more officers.
And so that's, right. So there was, it's, it's along the same lines. I'm not saying it's a, it's, that's a firm, um, we're, we're off, I'm not saying council is offering a 1.5 or $900,000 or whatever to supplant that. I said, this is the part of the conversation where there's, there's traffic officers. We're looking for the nexus where there's going to be, um, no law, there's not going to be any loss in service within the actual police department itself as it currently stands from an organizational perspective. From the discussion that Mr. Jones has had with Chief Mydl and Chief Lundgren, they believe that this can be an add-to within the current staffing model that they already have, that this is traffic program within the current staffing model that they have. Not adding additional officers, but siphoning out officers just for traffic calming is my understanding. And again, it's ongoing. I'm not saying that this is something that's on the board. These are, these are part of these conversations.
Well, I just, the way it could optically look to neighborhoods who are watching today might be like, council wants to add an additional $900,000 or take away $900,000 from traffic calming to pay for that.
Got it, got it.
And that's not what we've talked about.
I apologize. That's not, that's, that's my own.
Well, but that 900 is already what we have previously allocated to places that has not been used.
Correct.
So it's just keeping it the same and just saying that would decrease the general fund demand.
And we, we've done it before too, where we, I mean, I, I told you, Breen and I have been talking about this for four years. So we, we dedicated that money first for four officers, traffic officers, and then it wasn't used. I mean, it just sat there. So, okay, fine, you're not going to use it. Take it back.
And, and I was like, the chief said that they were working towards it. But I think from that conversation, he was saying that those would be the very last officers after we're very fully staffed. Those would be the last people that we, we have on staff.
He said that, but I think he's going to find out that there are people he will recruit that they would like to do that. I mean, that is, that's an okay thing to be able to do instead of running around, you know, DV cases and so forth.
But he wasn't proposing that idea of recruiting people that way.
No, 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 no.
To your point of you've had those positions and you haven't recruited for them.
Exactly.
So that's, that's where we're at with those. Again, ongoing conversations. There needs to be a clear nexus. I don't think that there's any, um, I don't think there's any discrepancy with, amongst council, that that's, that's what they want to see. Again, talking about the, the long-term property tax discussion that we brought up right off the bat, that, you know, like I said before, all the air got sucked out of the room when we were trying to clear the deficit for 2023. So we missed the boat for, um, anything to take an actionable result in 2024. We have to have those continued conversations as, as we're talking about long-term sustainability. Um, there's, there's a lot of variables that are at play. Measure one is obviously a significant one that we have to keep our eyes on and see what happens. Um, but there's, again, there's a lot of grabs for, uh, revenue in, in all different angles. Um, and with sales tax growing at the pace that it's at and the 1% limit from the state legislator that we can only grow our sales tax. Now, I, I had a conversation with Eric Paulson yesterday, said that the, the legislator is really pushing to change that to a 3% this year. Um, it's the last of three years that they've been having those discussions. So that might change. I, I'm not sure.
Property or sales?
Property.
Okay.
Yep. Um, so.
And we've had that on our legislative agenda previously.
Correct. Yep.
Something that the city supports.
So it, it's, it's, uh, we're not, we're not unique in the fact that we're, um, one of the municipalities that is having challenges with that 1% sales tax growth when, when, uh, I'm sorry, 1%, um, property tax growth when sales tax is kind of stalling out to where it is right now.
Councilmember Orlak, go ahead.
Thank you. Matt, should ballot one pass? Can you remind me how much revenue would come to Spokane and would that revenue then be able to use to satisfy the SPD budget? And at what time?
Um, if measure one, are you asking if measure one were to pass?
Correct.
So if measure one were to pass, um, it's 2/10ths of a percent, um, which nets out to, I believe, $12 million a year overall. Um, it, I believe it's six per, uh, six per 1/10th of percent.
Is that how, because we get 40% of?
We'll get 40% of that.
No, we won't get 40%. All the small cities and us get 40%.
Right, right. So there's, there's, I, I can't give a firm answer on what we will receive. Um, the other question that is, that is looming out there is if the, um, if the county is building a jail, a, a new facility, an expanded facilities, as we know that there's currently no jail contract as it stands right now, we can presume that with increased expenses at the county level, whatever the capacity is that we use, that it is going to be at the expense of the participants that are using those, those services. So right now, we are spending about, um, anywhere between $5 and $6 million for our, for just our jail bell, bill. Um, so if we, if we use more services, if those services become more expensive, if they pass on the construction onto, um, the individual cities and municipalities, it, it could be, we could get less than the 40%. Um, so there's, there's a lot of variables at play that I think, um, many of you have asked those questions of, let's, let's have that mapped out and let's see what those next steps are of what we will actually get instead of just saying you'll get 40% because it's one thing to say you'll get 40%, but in the other hand, asking for 20% of that back, it makes it challenging and not necessarily a solution for this council or the city. Did that answer your question?
It made sense.
Okay, so.
Yes, thank you.
Impact proposals from administration. Um, we've heard that, um, there's ideas on restructuring the debt, the internal SIP loans that we have. Um, this has come into two different variations or, well, I guess two, maybe three, um, depending on how you look at it. But one variation of it is to use one-time dollars, um, meaning our reserve dollars to pay off SIP loans for 2023. Now, I don't know if there's the intent to pay off the entirety of the SIP loans, um, but I believe there's about $4.8 million that's due in principal balance. Um, we owe 3.4 next year. So I think the, the, and again, I'm just going on what I know. I think the idea is maybe using just 3.4 to delay payments for a year, um, but doesn't necessarily solve the problem for 2025. It kind of kicks the can down the road. Um, again, by doing that, you would have to ask for a suspension of the ordinance that was passed to say, we are going to be rebuilding the reserves that we passed in combination with the, um, the ordinance, uh, requiring the 10% reduction in 2022. Um, the other side that they're talking about is, um, delaying or postponing those payments, so restructuring the debt. Um, so it's either longer term or it skips some of the next year's payments. Um, again, the problem that I have with that, uh, is that you have, um, certain capital assets that you are financing past their useful life. So you have money owed on finance or on, um, assets that isn't, uh, that, that are, from a taxable basis are, um, are no longer within their useful life. It's, it's, it's not something out of the realm of possibility coming from the private side. It's definitely something that, um, businesses do. They'll put a six-year, they'll put a, you know, six-year, um, loan on a, on a piece of equipment that's only worth four. It, it, it's done, but it's not ideal. Again, you're not, you're not, you're not post, you're not removing any of the interest payments. All the interest is still accruing if you kick that can down the road. So you're still paying more, um, if you, if you push that out further. I, I don't know what they're going to do. I said, you know, obviously both will be, uh, part of the discussion. Um, they've talked about reducing travel and training expenditures down to about two, or down by $200,000. Um, and then there's also been department reductions of $6 million. Um, but that could, I've asked for the details, um, and, and been told that it'll be provided, uh, when we, uh, get the budget on October 2nd. But that could be included in some of the above actions. Um, they've, they also have an optimistic sales tax projection. Again, this is something that I had talked about a little bit, uh, before. Right now, we're trending at about 2% growth year over year from the actuals of where we're at. So we have a 4%, 4% plus growth from 2023 adopted budget for sales tax numbers to 2024's budget. Instead of looking at where we're trending right now, which is lower, obviously. So if you look at where we're trending from a sales tax number and you put that number, the 2024 number that they have up there, you see a 6.7% growth year over year. Now, with what we know that the, um, the, um, the interest rates are still going up, consumer spending is still slowing down. We're seeing it. I mean, uh, Jake Miller is, is obviously showing this in his detailed reports that he's providing to us every month. Um, it's, it's not an optimistic look to say, okay, let's go above and beyond of where we're at. Now, 4%, one could argue, um, I, I believe Jessica Stratton got that number from, um, some of Dr. Jones' projections that he had. Um, but I believe using 4% on the benchmark of what we are projecting 2023 to do is probably a mistake because in reality, we know that we're trending down from, from where we were projecting 2023. And that, that difference alone would net out to about $2 million if we, if we use the trend versus the projection.
Could we, could we also talk about, uh, two things? Um, we're going to have to cut at 12:15.
Okay.
And move on to the next thing. But could we talk too about, we've asked for a, um, list of all the properties and assets we have that are not necessarily performing for us, such as the Cannon Street Shelter. And, um, I know you have a list of those. So at some point, can we talk about that wouldn't necessarily be, um, short-term where, where we get immediate dollars.
Yeah, I mean, it won't solve it, right.
But it might help, uh, 2025.
Correct.
So, and then we were talking about the utilization of, of City Hall. And are we using that wisely? How much are we just storing paper?
Mm-hmm.
So.
And that's, that's on next slide. You're getting ahead of me a little bit. So additional deficit-reducing measures for 2024 that we've brought and that we're kind of discussing at this point in time. So a benefits eligibility audit. I talked to David Moss yesterday about something. Um, this is, uh, this is something that, um, is encouraged through GFOA, uh, which is the government, I mean, it's the gold standard of, um, what government agencies are doing from a financial perspective. This is something that we did about nine years ago. It's, it's essentially saying, okay, of all of the, uh, individuals that are on our benefit, uh, plan, there is likely some that have either, um, spouses that have, uh, that have divorced or separated, uh, that are no longer eligible, but we're still paying for the, uh, the coverage. Um, dependents that are, uh, aged out, they're past the, the eligibility age, but we're still paying the, the, um, expenses on a, on a monthly basis. Um, we did this about nine years ago and I, I believe we identified about a half a million dollars. The, I, the, the, um, the idea nine years ago was to do it every other year and it just kind of fell by the wayside. Uh, David Moss is working with Teresa to start that process right now. He's, he thought it was a great idea. Um, so I believe that's going to be underway. The easiest way to do it is during our open eligibility, uh, time is to just have everybody fill out all of their dependent information on that information sheet so that we can make sure, um, that everybody that is, that we're paying for is eligible. Uh, communication infrastructure changes. I talked to Mike Sloan about that yesterday. Um, each, almost every employee within this organization has a cell phone, a desk phone and a, uh, phone on their laptop. So they have three different ways of communicating. We're paying for three different ways. Um, and we're paying for the hard phones themselves, primarily the most expensive ones. Strangely enough, are going to be the, um, the desk phones because, uh, the cell phones, we get relatively cheap because, uh, providers want to, they, they essentially give us those for free because they want our business. Um, reducing that down is part of the, the plan that, uh, Mike Sloan is working on to, uh, reduce that cost a bit. Um, could it be a huge savings? No, not necessarily. Could it materialize, um, by 2024? Not immediately. Um, obviously we, we don't continue. I mean, I, I know that they bought these phones in packs of 100 essentially. So they buy these 300 some odd dollar phones in packs of 100 and then they start distributing them. Um, I think we need to stop that. I think we need to review the, uh, the actual phone coverage. I know Mike is working on that with Dell at this point in time. Uh, paper consumption, back to what you were saying, Council President. Uh, we, we, when we had the Integra study, we noticed, we, we noted that, um, 60% of our, of City Hall was being utilized, but a vast majority of the underutilized space was paper storage. Um, so we know that we're a very paper-centric organization. Historically, cities always are. Um, but we don't currently have any sort of tracking mechanism on how much we're spending on paper. We put it into a supply line item, um, and we just have it get washed away within our overall supplies. I think identifying a, a way of tracking that moving forward is going to be crucial to, to get to a paperless, uh, organization or a more paperless organization and kind of putting some accountability on that. Yes.
Yeah. I, I mean, there's some, I think, pretty simple things we could do to, to go that direction. We've tried to do that in my office to a certain extent.
Yep.
I mean, when I came into this position, I had a, a real nice high-speed scanner that I brought with me and, and, you know, we, I, you know, scan everything that comes in and keep it stored that way. So it seems like we could implement some pretty standard procedures that would make that a pretty easy thing to accommodate.
Completely. Low-hanging fruit that's out there. I mean, it's very easy to just put a detail code on there and, and all paper that's ordered is, is, um, put through this actual, you know, you just have to code it a little bit differently. Um, I think it's important for not, not only what we're trying to do from a fiscal impact, but also from an environmental sustainability impact. So that's something, again, low-hanging fruit that's, that's out there that isn't going to solve 2024, but long-term makes us more sustainable.
Also effectiveness. I mean, you, you have all the, that documentation digital. You can access it from anywhere. I mean, it makes you far more effective as an organization and as council members.
Correct.
Can I ask one? I, I don't know if this has come up and this is not going to be popular.
Okay.
But my question is, with the whole issue of people working from home that are set up now to work permanently from home, they don't come into City Hall, they don't have to pay parking, blah, blah, blah. Has there been any discussion about those employees that are working from home, um, changing some of this? Like, maybe they don't get phones? Maybe?
Well, I mean, yeah.
I'm just wondering if that's a way to look at saving some.
And, and that's, that's part of the team that, that, that's part of what Mike is looking at, uh, within the, the IT department, right? It's saying, okay, we, we, because of COVID, we rethought our communication system and we expanded our cell phone coverage and we expanded being able to get a call from our desktop, straight from our cell phone, um, and, and just connecting to a headset. Previously, people were adamant against that idea of having a headset and not having a phone. Now, people seem to be a lot more attuned to it and they're okay with that idea. So I think, um, that's where we have to start utilizing those opportunities as a, as a, um, as a reason for change and a reason for cost-saving instead of saying, okay, we, we're keeping our cell phone because it's a, or we're keeping our desk phone because it's something that we've always had.
Right.
When it's just collecting dust on, on each one of our desks and, and we're getting calls on our cell phone or we're getting calls on our desktop, or we could get our phone calls from our desk phone on our desktop. Now, that's not to say that we don't have some departments that need desk phones, right? Uh, 301 being, you know, a prime example, right?
Right.
They need desk phones. They need to have that, um, global, um, I forget what Mike called it, but global call agent where, you know, they, they kind of get path through the system. So there are, i- it's not a, hey, you can just wipe the slate clean. It's, it's saying, okay, this is an opportunity that we have. Let's right-size it based on the need that we have and not have three different forms of communicating the exact same way. Um, supplier contract reviews. Uh, this is in the same vein. I mean, uh, just, just on surface level reviews that I've done. I know Kershaw's is our, um, preferred, uh, supplier, local here in Spokane. Um, just looking at, uh, Amazon versus Kershaw's for general supplies orders that I've done for our regular supply orders. I see about a 20 to 25% discount within what I can purchase on Amazon, Amazon cost versus, uh, Kershaw's. It's something that I know a lot of organizations are moving to because of the cost benefit that's out there. Um, I understand the idea to, you know, maintain current contracts, but it's something to review either discussions with Kershaw's or discussions of how we, how we right-size, um, our, our, um, supply orders. Um, review surplus inventory and property. This is exactly what Council President Kinnear was talking about. Um, this is something that I've, I've gotten the list from Dave Steele. It is a lengthy list with a lot of, um, obviously parks, properties that are scattered throughout the city, utilities, properties that are scattered out through the city. But there are some opportunities that are out there. Cannon is a prime example of that. Let's look at those. Let's see if we can get them off the books. Um, because, you know, even if we're not selling them for much, we're removing that repairs and maintenance coverage that we're paying. Uh, vacancy reductions. Uh, we did this exercise last year. We did the exercise the year before. We review the vacancies that are out there and we remove them from the books. I think generally departments want to hold on to their positions. That's, that's just, um, that's what they do because they fear losing that position and they fear losing that support long-term. Um, in my discussions with Garrett Jones, you know, it, the problem is, is when you're doing contras instead of rem... doing contras instead of removing those positions, um, the material, materializing those savings is so much more difficult to, um, really capture. So I think, um, you know, really identifying what positions you can get off the books are important, not just within the general fund, but citywide. Uh, again, an exercise that you've all performed the last two years. Um, and then salary review. Um, it's, um, obviously it's not, um, something that we, we love to discuss, but I, I know that, um, when the state had fiscal challenges, um, when COVID was brought on, uh, immediately what they did is they, uh, put, um, you know, depending on the different organization, they put, um, caps and, and, um, salary reductions on, on some of their, um, union and non-union employees. Now, obviously with our contracts just being outside of collective bargaining agreements, it's difficult for us to go down any sort of road where we're gonna start opening those backs up, back up because they would have to be MOUs with the contract, so we can't necessarily look at that. Um, but there is conversations that we can have, uh, about, uh, non-represented employees that are, that, that, um, could maybe assist in that. So those are conversations, again, not easy conversations, but conversations that we can have.
And also looking at out-of-grade pay.
We're, we're still looking at out-of-grade pay. Um, the, the challenge with the out-of-grade pay, which I, I agree with you, the challenge with the out-of-grade pay is generally what prompts an out-of-grade pay is doing something outside of your original, uh, job description, right? And generally, those are union, uh, represented employees for the most part. And, um, if you're performing work outside of your job description that is defined by the, your union contract, you, you could be in violation, meaning the organization itself could be in violation of the, the agreement that you have with that employee. So it's that, you know, as, as easy as it sounds to say, okay, like, let's, let's put a stop to it. And I agree with you, I mean, it's something that we should, we should reclassify that employee instead of paying that employee out of grade. Um, that should be the habit.
And follow the timelines of out-of-grade.
Right.
Because you can only be out of grade for so long.
Correct.
But we don't follow a lot of those.
Yep, so we're, we're looking at those as well.
Okay.
We're looking at those as well.
My last quick question is, if we were to do all the things that you mentioned, does that fill the gap?
Uh, it does not fill the gap. It does not fill the gap. Um, you know, there's, there's, um, there is a, there's a lot of discussion of, of what needs to happen. Where we find ourselves is difficult. I think if, um, the, the organization would have, um, been trying to drive towards the resolution that was passed in October of 2022, I think we would be in a much better position if we would have reduced our overall expenditures, expenditures for 2023 by 10%. We wouldn't see that structural gap of where we're at right now. Um, not to say that it wouldn't reappear because remember, we've got, um, we've got employees that are, um, we've got an employee-centric organization that's, that's, um, has collective bargaining agreements that are raising, outpacing our, our revenue growth. So we, we'd have to find some revenue as well, uh, but we'd be in a much different position. Um, I know that there's ideas of, of adding more finance folks, number nerds as some people like to call them, um, but I just want to leave you with this one thing that, uh, GFOA had sent, and it's, it's, it's talking about being data-driven and results-oriented in, um, budgeting in bad times, and that's saying, in some, in some organizations, layers of control may have built up that add overhead costs and give limited value. Instead, put the onus on the managers to do their jobs. To illustrate, one Midwestern city, departments regularly exceeded their budget. The first response of the finance director was to assign budget analysts to each department, another layer of control, and the analysts would try to cajole the departments into following their budget. Unsurprisingly, this did not work, so the finance director removed the analyst and told departments that they would manage their own budgets. If they went over, they would need to go before the city's Ways and Means Committee in a public meeting and explain why they were over budget and what they were going to do to fix it. They would then have to report back to the committee on how they were doing with staying within their budget. Unsurprisingly, this worked, departments started to comply with their budgets almost immediately. So that's, again, asking for that transparency and that unfiltered access to the department heads that you've been asking about. Um, ask the department directors and the, and the cabinet members for their insight on how to manage their budgets because that is what we're asking them to do, that is what we're tasking them to do. Um, I implore us not to, to add more layers of, um, of bureaucracy within the manager and the employees that, that they're managing.
Okay, is that a wrap?
I think that's a wrap.
All right. Uh, any final last words from folks? All right. Matt, I just want to say a special thank you.
Yeah.
Because I know we've all had sleepless nights, you've probably had more than your fair share, so just want to say thank you for doing this and, um, informing all of us, but also coming up with some fresh ideas that some of us haven't thought about, so I appreciate that too.
Of course, thank you.
Thanks, Matt.
Okay. We're moving on to the regional homeless authority discussion. Uh, Councilmember Bingle and I have been regularly attending these meetings and the last meeting we attended was last Thursday where it was a larger meeting and the providers, some of the providers were included. It felt like there was more, um, conversation and we heard from some of the providers what the challenges were and some of the ideas they had, so it was, I thought, really informative. I just, before, Jonathan, before you, um, sorry, Councilmember Bingle, before you start, I just wanted to point out, as I already did, that, um, the city of the valley is really not quite on board yet. And the little cities, some of the little cities are enthusiastic and saying, yeah, this is, this is, we're all on board, we're gonna help, but they don't have a revenue stream to offer. So it's pretty much up to us and the county where the money's gonna come from, and that gives me pause. So I think we need to work out who all is giving what and how much at some point because right now I just feel like it's us. So I'm gonna turn it over to you and you can go through, you've, I've passed out the, uh, potential funding sources and support for regional authority option two plus, so everybody has that in front of them. And if you want to go through that, um, or if you have something else planned, please go ahead.
Awesome, thank you so much. Yeah, we, um, had a meeting last Thursday, uh, and we've expanded our meetings to, uh, a two-hour meeting as opposed to a one-hour, to get, um, instead of it just being a recap session every week, uh, there's actually time for us to discuss the, and, um, this particularly decided to discuss funding because that is obviously one of the, you know, biggest, um, discussion items that we, because, um, as we, we're just talking about the budget, there's not a lot of expendable dollars for us to be putting towards any effort like this. And so what we did in the last Thursday meeting is we set up a few different options, which was, uh, you know, option one was what was pitched to us, um, which was, you know, basically everything, every dollar that can be spent, um, in this space was going towards this space. Um, option two was basically only federal in-state dollars, um, that are currently being used for this purpose would be used, but no extra dollars from, um, any municipality or the county, um, just only those dollars that are, uh, basically the pass-through dollars. Option three was like a more concise version, which was, um, you know, all the federal and state pass-through dollars and then some extra dollars on top. And what I, there wasn't consensus in the room, but it seemed as if the majority of folks were somewhat interested in, uh, the, the most basic option, which was just federal and state dollars that are currently being used for this purpose, uh, then, uh, you know, directed towards the regional homeless authority, uh, in what, um, because the COC will fold the dollars that are federally directed toward them, and so it would be a cooperation, uh, dollars that are, you know, and other dollars that are coming in for us to be able to, uh, court, um, outdo those. Then there was some interest, well, maybe we could all give a little bit more. Um, it wasn't a, like, yes, we're all gonna give more, but we're open to the conversation. And so what, um, I asked, uh, to do was to, um, put together a, um, uh, the funding pool, um, are options for us in the plus category. Uh, so, um, I was able to send notes out to everybody. Unfortunately, it was only about 30 minutes before study session and so, um, we might not get a huge discussion on this, uh, today, uh, but those are some options that we could have. Um, I did hear back from, um, some council members, um, and basically, um, I think it's in line with what Kinnear said, um, and, you know, Councilwoman Wilkerson, uh, shared of, uh, their, uh, good stance, I think, for us as a city, which is, we are not gonna be the only ones funding everything. If this is something where, you know, others are willing to bring extra dollars to the table, then we can discuss that as well. And I think that's, that Councilwoman Kinnear and I have conveyed to this group, which is, uh, we have, uh, you know, historically funded this more than, more than others. Um, and, um, if it's gonna be a true regional collaboration, then there's, um, um, more symmetry in, in the dollars that are being used. So, um, before you are some, some dollars that could be used. Uh, there's really four or five pots of local dollars that could be used, uh, towards this. One of them is the recording fee, there are some HUD entitlement dollars, CDBG, uh, 1590, something that could be used towards this, the county's mental health, uh, tax could be used, um, uh, for this purpose, and some others. But those are sort of the, um, in the two-plus options, all of these that have been given to you would be a, a plus option, uh, that are not currently dollars that are being used for this, but could be used for this, um, at least in that, uh, used by the, the homeless authority. We're obviously using our 1590, when we see fit, um, but could help coordinate something. Um, so with that, uh, you know, I'll open it up, or I don't know if Nicolette is there, um, you know, she was also in that meeting and so-
She's here, yes. She's here.
If, if counsel, I missed that, and, um, you know, we can, we can fix that.
Okay, thanks.
Or she can jump in.
Okay, and she's, she is here. So Councilmember Cathcart has some questions.
Well, not question, just a quick comment. So, uh, on the local, that's good to know that that's sort of an add-on, uh, that they're not expecting that that would be a base funding, um, because I, I definitely would not support at this time until this entity has proven itself allocating any local, City of Spokane specific dollars to a regional entity, um, without some proof that it's gonna work and, and, and we have made commitments to our citizens on how some of those dollars would be used already. So we gotta be, I think, cautious of that. Um, but the second part is, and I'm just, again, you know, it's kind of hard to know exactly what's going on with these meetings because they're not streamed live and, and I, so I really have no idea, but, um, I think part of the negotiation should be, should go well beyond, uh, dollars and it should include the location of high-impact services. And I think you can offer that in lieu of dollars, uh, and I think that that would be perfectly acceptable and frankly, might even be the, a, a really positive outcome. And so, but I have heard zero discussion around that, but again, not invited to the meetings, uh, or not able to attend the meetings and, and, uh, they are open, but not able to attend them. And, um, and so I just don't know if that's been brought up kind of behind closed doors.
Can I jump in here? Can I jump in? I brought it up and crickets. So that's scary. You're gonna put a what, where? So it, I'll keep bringing it up because I think that's really important. And the other thing we have talked about is what does the structure look like? So how many board members? Who are they? Who appoints them? How do you select a, a director? All of those things are still in the works. And I think this is honestly, Councilmember Bingle, I think when we were, started to talk about that, it felt like it was a little premature because we should be talking about the structure first before we talk about funding. But I wasn't in charge, nor was, nor were you, it was, um, we were just cogs in that wheel. So I wonder if I could get Nicolette up here to answer some questions about, um, just go into a little bit more detail about the federal funding because are, there's CDBG, but are there Hen dollar, what else is involved here?
Well, I mean, so-
Go ahead.
Sorry, quickly, I wanted to-
Respond to, yes.
Uh, uh, um, Councilmember Cathcart said as well, our last meeting was streamed and recorded, um, because we've definitely heard from everybody, we want to be able to see what's happening.
Awesome.
We used, last, we recorded.
Can somebody forward me that link or let me know where that's at?
Yeah. I don't think they have sent that out, so to everyone would be great.
And I did not know that, so thanks for sharing that.
Uh, yeah, I'm not sure if it's on the Spokane Unite website, but they said they would put it up. Last I checked, it wasn't, but I haven't checked today. Um, so yeah, I mean, so with respect to the, the state funding, I know that it was mentioned, but it's not really on this list, right? So I don't see the, what they call HAHA, the H-H-A-A, or Hen or CHG. So I don't know why those weren't listed here, if they were just missed or, or if they were a part of the discussion. Do you know, Jonathan? I don't know where this document came from.
Yeah, I received that from Rick last night, um, and so I, um, hadn't had a, a lot of time to review it as I was, um, at Vista Academy here, but, um, I thought that there was at least a good rep, it's, it's not an exhaustive list, but it's a, the situation of dollars that we could, um, discuss, but there are, there are other pots as well that will continue to add, um, you know, um, discussion items for folks.
I, I think for me, like, part of what it, it highlights is this problem that's been happening since the very beginning of getting a really clear understanding or mapping out of, here are all the funding sources that exist currently and here's the structure of how those decisions are made on those funding and how they're recommended and, and what that looks like before we suggest, uh, a shift or a change in, in those pieces. And so, um, as I suggested in the last meeting on Thursday, um, you know, I'd said, I, I thought that that group would benefit from some educational pieces that really laid that all out very clearly, and this doesn't even approximate, um, that. It would be great to be able to get a list from each of the different jurisdictions, exactly what funding sources they currently use toward homelessness and, and which ones they want to hold on to and which ones they don't. Um, I, I don't think we have yet received that. And even as far as this looks, if we say we're starting with federal and state, the state isn't even on here. So, I mean, I think this document too is a little bit confusing as to what's being sort of proposed or put forward or even being discussed. And I do think you're right that getting some sort of clarity on, um, the number of, of people who will be on that governing board and how the non-electeds will be appointed, probably should have been discussed before this piece because I think, and I think it's a part of that discussion. Because then, you know, when you ask, okay, well, how many members, elected members are gonna be on this, uh, governing board, you could go about it, well, we want to make it fair. Does that mean proportional representation as in the people who are, you know, giving the largest, you know, sums of money, like, or, and staff? Do they get more members than somebody else? Or is it just one per jurisdiction or, or what does that look like? And so I think that some of these discussions are, are sort of woven together, but the only way to go forward is for everybody to sort of agree to the basic facts. This is how things currently are, these are the funds that are currently used, these are the, you know, bodies that make those decisions, and then this is how it would look based on these proposals. But it's hard, hard for me to understand how you guys can make a decision on, on how to shift, um, the way things operate now without everybody agreeing that, um, this is exactly how things operate now. Does that make sense? And I think that we're just lacking that. And that's a piece that I hope that with the, uh, mayoral, uh, executive order allowing them to have access to staff, you'd think that that mapping out of those systems would be a key piece to, to start with. I think that a lot of those Thursday discussions have some misleading and, uh, and conversations that go astray in virtue of the fact that we're not all looking at the same facts and so we're not all coming from the same place of understanding, um, and I think that makes the conversations a little bit more difficult to have.
Councilmember, um, hold on, John, Councilmember Stratton, did you have a question?
No.
Yeah, I was wondering where the conversation was last at with, um, governance, structure, board seats and sunsetting versus not sunsetting or the two-year out.
So, uh, Councilmember Bingle has those answers.
Yeah, so I, we did not talk governance yet, but it absolutely is a big topic and there's, uh, there was a debate that, uh, had, do we talk about money first, do we talk about governance first? Um, the decision was made to talk money first, uh, which, if, if not, uh, you know, in my, in my opinion, I, I might have done it another way, but I don't, uh, um, a necessarily bad decision. So governance still needs to be discussed, um, when it comes to actual board position like that, but, um, um, on the funding, uh, this, uh, the, the document that was sent to me assumed that the current federal and state dollars that are being used were going to be applied. These were just, again, those options of the, of the two-plus, these are things that we could add on top of what is used.
To go onto the, I, I don't know if all other council members are aware of this because I only realized about a week ago after talking to Nicolette, that the current proposal with the two-year, after two years you can opt out, you do not get back the revenue source, so.
I don't think that went anywhere. I think-
Well, I think that nothing has changed from that, though.
No, but we got such opposition from the city of the valley over that, they-
Yeah, but I didn't think there was a- Yeah, but I didn't think there was a change proposal. I just think that.
It just kind of faded.
Well, I think that's why they probably switched to a different conversation.
Maybe.
But I just want to gauge our understanding. I don't think I support two years of not getting the funding sources back, and so.
That was the point. Everybody's going.
I want to make sure that we were on the same page.
Yeah, no, I had heard some conversation around that, but no, I mean, part of the problem, I think, is, you know, we have the ongoing conversation or meetings on Thursdays, but they don't change the documents or update documents based on that conversation. So it's kind of like something might have been changed, or dismissed, or included, and there's no official documents that sort of, that I've seen anyway that recognize that. So that's part of the issue, I think.
And the last one that was talked about at the Homeless Coalition meeting was that the City of Spokane would only get one board seat instead of two, and I didn't.
Yeah, but we haven't, that conversation just caught dropped.
Well, as you go to the next meeting about that, when that comes back up.
Yeah.
I personally don't think we should only have equal seats as the Valley or other jurisdictions that are.
You think we should?
We should have more.
Yeah, okay.
I think it should be similar, more similar to like STA, where we have multiple seats.
Well, yeah, because we're doing all the services here.
Yeah.
Councilmember Bingle, go ahead.
Yeah, I think there's a good argument that the City of Spokane should have more. I have a governance structure that I can happily email out to everybody that I have, you know, worked through just in my own brain of something that I think makes sense. But if everybody's got thoughts on it, I would love to hear it represented as well. I think there's also something to be said where I totally understand where you're coming from, Councilmembers of bone, on if we're providing, we should have more representation. I think there's also something that, or, you know, a unified front in that, you know, we all have equal representation on this board. And so in the governance structure that I proposed, I removed, the City of Spokane, specifically I removed the administrative, the administration's seat on the board. I kept the council president, because I think it makes the most sense. Take citywide elected officials, so there's government oversight. But if we no longer have any employees in this, I see why the administration would need to be involved here, but money is still being given to the board station. It makes sense that we who control the purse strings would be in this. But it can't be me, since I'm not a citywide elected official, it can't be, you know, councilmembers or Cathcart. It needed to be the council president to where there was still that oversight. But then that administration's seat was something that we reached out to the Spokane tribe to ask, would you be interested in being a part of this? And this would be, you know, one of the government, I don't call them, in my mind, it's government representation. And then the Spokane would take the administration's seat. But like I said, I can send out a more detailed and organized plan on that to everybody here.
Hey, Jonathan, did you hear back from the tribe, Spokane tribe?
I emailed both chairs. I was the chair, and I haven't heard back yet. It's on my list of things to do to follow, to follow back up. But I've reached out to folks like, hey, what's the best way? I reached out to their lobbyist, Luke Esser, one of our lobbyists, lobbyist for the Kalispel tribe. He connected me with Jean, I can't remember her last name, who is the Spokane lobbyist. I even reached out to them to see if they could help. Still no response, but, you know, it's only been a couple of weeks. We'll keep going.
A suggestion that I had made to Gavin when I met with him last week was, instead of having just one representative from small cities, one representative from the tribes, think about creating some sort of a tribal caucus and a small cities caucus. That way they could sort of debate, discuss, and then report, report out from that caucus to the full group what their kind of thinking is or what their decisions are.
Yeah, I like the concept of having a caucus, because one of the things I haven't quite figured out yet is where, how the small cities representative will be chosen, because we're trying to balance off the board. I think the small cities, based on what I proposed, it could end up being the battleground for the governmental ideology or something. And so I haven't quite figured that out, and I don't think we have quite figured that out. And so I'm open to suggestion. My understanding when it comes to the tribe is that they don't want to be represented by another tribe that's their own representation. And I could be wrong on that, but that is what.
You're right.
And so if we were to add a tribal seat, I think that you would have to have one for Spokane and Kalispel. But the reason why I have Spokane and not Spokane and Kalispel is because Spokane tribe is far larger than the Kalispel tribe. And my understanding is that they are also significantly more invested in response in the region. And so it made sense to me to have the representative on the board, but certainly open to other ideas.
Just one thing to add, I just had a really good meeting with the Kalispels recently, and I don't know if that's entirely true. I'll share with you some of the stuff they shared, but it sounds to me like they collaborate pretty significantly. And so we'll talk offline about it, but I think there might be some pathway.
Wonderful.
Okay, go ahead.
That'd be great, yeah.
I appreciate you explaining the background and thoughts around that. I'm still a little concerned, though, if, on that proposal, I guess, of council still, or the City of Spokane only having one seat. I appreciate the inclusion of the tribes, but maybe we just need to look at making the board bigger to include more voices. So just.
And remember, too, that there's the option of, for the small cities, they could rotate that seat. So they could have a system where one person does it for a year, and then they just go around and rotate. Same thing with the tribes, if you wanted to do it that way, they rotate the seat. You know, there's a lot of options.
And I would focus on the tribes that have.
Yeah, I love.
Focus on the tribes that have, I know the Spokane tribe has a lot of experience with housing-first models and rehousing. So it'd be interesting to know, you know, you could get three tribes that do that, and they could, you know, share that one seat, something like that.
Absolutely. I love, and any help in reaching the tribes, I would be super appreciative of. And I like the ideas of the rotating small cities. And, you know, we've even discussed situations where, again, you know, we do expand, Councilmember of bone brought up, we do expand and add another governmental seat and another subject matter expert seat. It just depends. Now, in the governance structure that I suggest is what's a public safety official in my mind, where I'm not exactly sure how it works out with government representatives. But if we're going to have a law enforcement officer on board, the law enforcement officer, every law enforcement officer but one is appointed by another elected official. So to me, it made sense to have the one who's directly accountable people be on this, which would be the sheriff. But while he would be a subject matter expert, he would also be a government representative. So it might be like, in the current model, it might be five and a half and a half, because he kind of wears both hats. But if we expanded, then that could be something that was just, you know, I don't know. I'm, a lot of thought going in, appreciate everybody's suggestions, because there's something there where we're going to get there.
Any other comments or questions? Nicolette, did you have anything to add?
I mean, I think I was just going to mention, one of the things that kind of was circulating through this is this, it doesn't seem like we're having a lot of traction on editing the documents to update where the negotiations are. And I do think that that is in part because when a discussion gets uncomfortable in that room, they do change the conversation.
Yes.
And I think that going forward, it would be helpful for that group to facilitate in a way that really made sure that we were, you know, taking the low-hanging fruit first, that really needs to be agreed upon before we can build on that, and just leaning into that uncomfortable conversation until a decision is made.
And I suggested that. And again, with the crickets, right?
Yeah.
So, yeah, go ahead.
I would actually go the opposite way. I think we've got some huge issues that are going to blow this thing up in three months, six months, a year, two years. And if you don't negotiate those now and figure that out, this whole effort might just be a waste of time.
Yeah, I agree, because I think that if we keep, like, avoiding the uncomfortable pieces, then we're not going to get anywhere ever.
Yeah.
I don't know.
Okay.
And the last thing that I would say is, as you guys are having those conversations, still asking for the next round of community outreach, and maybe that's after the next iteration, and then making sure that we have a robust community input period.
And one thing I would suggest is, what I think that the city should be doing, just for our part, right, is looking at those documents and then embedding our suggestions on what we want in the documents as edits, and redlining those documents, so that they have something to react to and negotiate from that's really concrete and solid. And then the other piece of that is, is calling for some objective, here's all the funding sources from everywhere that everybody can agree on, like, this is the starting base, not something that's, well, this is just an assumption about how things might be, you know, like some concrete facts to work from, would be my suggestion.
All right. Yes, one more thing, we're off.
One last thing, yeah. And I will say, that's what the hope has been, I'm really driving the conversation with the other jurisdictions, to do things similar to what we're doing, which is, here has been what the discussion was. Please take some time and digest this and look at the print, send your feedback. That way we can go back and have actually productive conversations as opposed to just talking about the same things over and over, the same issues over and over, trying to actually make some progress forward. And so if we can do that, we can start moving forward on the big issues, including governance and funding and those kinds of things.
Okay.
Otherwise, we're going to be stuck in the mud all day long. And a huge shout-out against Nicolette, who's working really hard on this, and it's been great to have City of Spokane so well represented with Council President Kinnear and Nicolette there, and Councilmembers of bone fitting in on some of the things. But it's been great to see the participation here.
Thank you, Council President. Yeah, see, I just gave you a, I gave you a raise, and I gave you a new, yes. Thank you. And let's hear from Councilmember Orlak now.
Yes, just really quick. I have, in the past, reached out to three different national home coalitions in different states, Black Hills, Appalachian, and I know one more. And I know in talking with them, they all just recommended, especially at the beginning, to start small and try to limit the number of cooks in the kitchen. So just wondering if, as we're planning this, has there been outreach to other organizations that have already done this? Are we following their lead, so we don't have to reinvent any wheels?
They seem to be focused on Houston. But I think one of the people in the last meeting mentioned this, start out small, excuse me, start out small, I think it was City of the Valley, it was their city manager, start out small, because if we bite off too big a chunk, we're not going to be successful. So that has been brought up and considered. But as Nicolette said, we need to keep track of the conversations and keep updating people, because we're going to keep going through the same mud, right? So thank you for that, yes. Let's make sure that the facts and the conversation is available to everybody, and it continues to be updated, so we all know we're all talking about the same thing. Okay, with that.
And.
And?
I was just going to say, if anybody has a question on anything, feel free to call it anytime. I'm happy to, I'll try to send more regular email updates. And kudos to Councilmembers of bone for suggesting this be on our regular Thursday study session. I think it's a really great idea, so.
It is, it is. Thank you. Right, meeting adjourned. We'll see you all Monday.